Hello, my name is Brandon Boudreaux and I am a candidate for District One Councillor. I am the son of Gilles and Yvonne Boudreaux from Ayrishat and I graduated from St. Effex in 2016 with a Bachelor of Business Administration degree with a major in accounting. From there, I went to work at Grand Thornton and during my time at Grand Thornton, I worked on multiple municipal audits such as Geisbroe County, Victoria County, and the village of Bedeck. This experience gave me a lot of insight into the financial statements and accounts that the municipalities operate with. It is vital for our councils to be well-versed with financial information as the number-one and most important role of council is to approve the budget. In prior years, our county has faced some transparency issues. Municipal finances and budgets should not be a secret. The taxpayers should have access to all this information. My main motive in running is to represent the residents selflessly with honesty and integrity. If elected, I will ensure that the welfare of our community and residents is my top priority. This is the change we need for Richmond County. Some areas I would like to explore if elected would be affordable housing, physician retention and recruiting, support for our healthcare facilities, and funding opportunities for economic development and tourism. I am committed to working hard to make Richmond County a great place for seniors and young families to live and live comfortably. With that being said, during the next couple of months, you may hear campaign promises from some of the other candidates. I will not make such promises, and here is why. Firstly, if elected, I will be one member of a five-member council team. It is quite difficult to say with absolute certainty that the other council members will agree and support my ideas in order to make it go through. I will work hard to present this information to council and to build awareness for issues that interest the residents. Secondly, the municipality operates with a budget, and a budget must balance. If we want to increase expenditures, we must also increase revenues or find an alternate source of revenues. The main source of revenue for the municipality is the property taxes, and I don't believe that the property tax rate should increase for the residents. When considering the things that candidates are promising, we should be asking questions like, "How are they certain that the other council members are going to agree with them? And how do they plan on funding these ideas?" Therefore, I will make only one promise. If elected, I promise to work very hard for the residents of our district and county. I will work to learn about and access funding opportunities from the other levels of government in order to help fund these important ideas and projects in our county instead of considering a tax rate increase. I promise to be honest and always act in the best interest of the residents and the county. I ask for your trust and support in representing you as the councillor for District One. I will represent you with honesty and integrity. I care about our county and would be honored to bring your voice to the council table. It's time for change.
Hi there, my name is Rod Sampson. I'm a candidate for the position of councillor in the municipality of the county of Richmond, District Number One. A little bit about myself. I'm the son of Alexander and Doris Sampson of Little Ants. I'm a husband to Tammy DeCoste. I'm a father to three beautiful children, Liam, Nate, and Carly. I work in the EHS system for just over 25 years, all here in Richmond County. I've been a volunteer. I'm an advocate for community development. I'm an honest, hard-working man, family man, and I'm here to try to be your voice, to have the chance to be your voice around the table at the county. As we look around, we see the need for work on our infrastructure, whether it be our water and sewer, our buildings that we own, the municipality, the arena, and many other things. We need to have plans to do that stuff, and we need to get that done. We can't wait, we have to be proactive. Some things I'd like to see a little bit more of or to return of is programs for seniors, for youth, for everybody in between. There's been cuts to the programs over the last few years, and something I'd like to see is have that stuff return to some sort of capacity. We have an on-tap potential here in Richmond County, tourism. Infrastructure is needed. We have trails, we have parks, we need some campsites. We need to work together with all the organizations that have product and create packages for people to stick around, to see everything. There are always little things that people don't know about, we don't talk about, or as visitors come in, they're only looking for certain things. We have to work together to make sure that they see everything that this place has to offer, whether it be just Al Madam, whether it be all of Richmond County. We all have something to offer, and I believe that we can do something to make sure that we all get a piece of that pie, that tourism pie. We need, we need a council that works cohesively together in order to move us forward as a county. What's good for one district is good for the county. We need to remember that. It's not always the same district that's going to get the products that have the infrastructure for certain things. But we have to work around that, we have to make sure that we share, we share, we work, we work for each district. Our not-for-profits are a great asset. Our businesses are a great asset. We have to promote them more, we have to help them out. If they need guidance, if they need financial assistance, if they need grants, whatever it is, we have to help them out. Those are the people and products that host events for our people, for the locals, for the visitors. We have to make sure that these people are helped out as well. We have, geez, our skilled labor force. We have lots of workers here that are skilled in doing stuff, and the work isn't around. So we have to work as a county, it's our job, to make sure that we attract businesses here that want to have good-paying jobs, have, not just seasonal, and seasonal is great, but not just seasonal work. Let's have full-time work, and I'm sure we can do this. If we work together, we can pull this off.
Je suis bien fier d'être ici aujourd'hui pour vous parler. On sait que le comté de Richmond a si tels potentiels que moi j'aime voir qu'on exporte tous les potentiels. Ça pourrait être de la tourisme, ça pourrait être des maird'oeuvres, des programmes pour les aînés, les jeunes, tout ensemble. Si élu, c'est sûrement une promesse pour vous. Je te promis que moi je travaillerais dur pour vous, pour être votre voix autour de la table au conseil de Richmond. I'll be there to be your voice. I want to be your voice, to have your concerns heard and dealt with. Campaigning this year is different, different for all of us. I chose not to go door-to-door. There's a few reasons for that. One of them is, I want to make sure that I'm not putting anybody in danger. As I said before, I do work with EHS. I've had dealings with the illness, with the virus, and I just don't feel comfortable having the potential to possibly expose someone. Therefore, I, as well as my team, have decided that the best course would be what I'm doing right now is phone calls, Facebook. If you see me out and about, by all means, but it's not somewhere that I go all the time. So anybody has any questions or concerns, by all means, my phone is always open. If I don't answer right away, I could be working, so I can call you back for sure if you leave your number and a name. On October 17th, vote Rod Sampson, the right choice.
Hi, my name is James Gaias, your councillor for District Number One, which comprises of Little Ants, Sansons Cove, Groney, Alderney Point, Boudreville, Robbins, Cape Hoggett, Little Beresua, the High Road, Low Road in Ayrishat, up to and including the New Horizons Club, Grand Dick Ferry Road up through Civic Number 346, and Pondville Stretch up to Civic Number 4798. I am re-offering in the upcoming municipal election, October 17th, 2020. Because of the COVID pandemic, I will not be campaigning door-to-door, so this is my official campaign. I did not promise anything when I presented myself as a candidate in 2016, but there were major issues that I intended to work on and address. Some of these issues were, and of course I say "some", I felt there was no accountability for the $300,000 per year of infrastructure and activity grants allotted to councillors. Therefore, this was abolished. There was a major concern also raised that the decrease of councillors or a reduction of councillors from 10 to 5 would mean an increase in stipends. There were no increases in councillors' stipends because of the reduction of 10 councillors to 5. We drastically reduced the travel allowance and expenses of councillors and administration, which was a major concern of mine and also of a lot of taxpayers in Richmond County. I expanded the Waste Management Program to include all of District Number One, which I represent, and which benefited a large number of taxpayers in District Number One. Even though we lost $800,000 in taxes because of the closure of the fractionation plant, there were no increases in residential or commercial tax rate for the past four years. This was a result, of course, of abolishing the infrastructure and activity grants, no increase in councillors' stipend, and drastic reduction in travel allowance and expenses of councillors and administration. Of course, we all know that we have an aging population in Richmond County. About 47% of our taxpayers are seniors on a fixed income. My main objective was, and still is, to maintain a decent and affordable residential and commercial tax rate while providing the essential services such as education, police protection, fire protection, garbage collection, streetlights, recreational services, for example, the Richmond Arena, and other services we deem essential, affordable, and beneficial to Richmond County taxpayers. The Richmond Arena could be considered a liability to municipal government, but it is an asset to residents of all ages in Richmond County. Minor hockey, figure skating, high school hockey, gentlemen hockey, and public skating. And therefore, I feel we are obligated to continue to operate the arena as a functional service to the residents of the county. For guaranteed effective representation, vote James Gaias, District Number One. Vote for full-time representation, experience, availability, accessible, reliable, accountable, quick response to all inquiries, be it provincial, municipal, or federal. If re-elected, a willingness and desire to represent the concerns of the taxpayer on a full-time basis at 100%. If elected, I can be contacted at the municipal office at 226-2400, at home at 226-9451, or cell number 227-8682. I encourage the voters in District Number One to give me the opportunity to work with you, for you, in moving the county of Richmond forward. Vote for effective representation. Vote James Gaias on October 17th. It is not time for a change. It is not time for a change, but an opportunity, an opportunity for you to continue to have your concerns brought forward and dealt with by your present councillor, James Gaias, who gives you full-time representation and experience. I ask you, the voters in District Number One, to give me the mandate to continue to provide you with the representation you deserve. The advance poll is at the New Horizons Club on October 10th and 13th, from 12 to 8. Election Day, October 17th, from 8 to 7. Exercise your right and duty. Vote at the advance poll or Election Day. Thank you, God be with you.
Hello everyone, my name is Sean Sampson and I am one of your candidates to become your District One councillor here in Richmond County. First off, I'd like to begin by thanking the entire staff here at Tala for allowing us the studio time to share our ideas and plans and goals for not only our District One, but Al Madam and Richmond County as a whole. So thank you to the staff of Tala. I would also like to extend good luck to my co-candidates, my fellow candidates here in District One, and also I would like to extend good luck to all other candidates in the other districts in Richmond County. As you all know, I am a longtime resident of Richmond County and of District One. I was raised in Sansons Cove by my parents and Aunt Jen Sampson and with my sisters Donna and Shergan. I now reside in Ayrishat with my wife Carrie and our two sons, Connor and Raline. For the people who know me best, they would probably describe me with one word: passionate. I'm passionate about the important things in my life and I'm passionate about the important topics that surround my life. And when you combine the two, it gives you all the reason why I'm here running for District One councillor. My family and my community. I want to be part of building a stronger District One, a stronger Al Madam, and a stronger Richmond County for our young generation and for our young kids that are coming up and going to lead this county forward. For me, the top five focuses on my district would be to be open and transparent. I'm going to say what I mean and I'm going to do what I say. I've been in the sales industry for over 25 years now, and I tell all my potential clients, "If I do not sell myself to you, I will never sell you anything." So as I'm going door-to-door and I'm campaigning, if I don't sell myself to the voters, if I don't gain your trust and respect or you don't trust and respect what I'm sharing with you and what my goals are for Richmond County, then I won't get your vote. So it has to start there, openness and transparency. I will also be representing our county and our district as a whole. Whether you're young, whether you're old, whether you're an employee or an employer, if you are a voter in Richmond County and in District One, you have a voice and your voice deserves to be heard. I will also be attending committee meetings. I think this is important for councils and councillors to be attending these meetings just to see and be aware of obstacles, plans, and goals of these committees and to help out in any way they can. So I will be attending committee meetings within our district. Town hall meetings on a quarterly basis and public consultation and input. These two things, for me, they go together. We have to get out there and share our opinions, our goals, and our ideas for Richmond County, but we also have to let our district and our residents have a voice. They had a voice when they elected us, so they should always have a voice during the four-year term that we are around the council table. We need to better engage our residents. We better, we need to better communicate with them, and these public town halls on a quarterly basis will help that. We, as councillors, are elected to represent our district, not to rule it. So I will be around the council table to represent all of us, not me, not myself. It's not my decision, it's our decision. I've attended many meetings over the last few terms where there's been a lot of important topics discussed and a lot of important decisions made. And we have to all ask ourselves, "How many elected municipal officials have knocked on our doors to discuss these important topics and to discuss these important decisions?" I think we all know the answer to that question, and I think that has to change. Again, it's not my decision, it's ours. It's ours to make, it's our district, it's not mine. When focusing on the county, top five for me when focusing on the county is the procurement and retention of our doctors and nurses, our healthcare professionals. Economic growth for our island, our district, and Richmond County as a whole. We have to build our tourism industry here on Al Madam and also in Richmond County. We have to support our young entrepreneurs, and we have to work on affordable housing for our seniors. When looking at these top five topics for our county, retention is the key. We need to keep our doctors and nurses. We need to keep our tourists, not let them do a drive-by. We need to keep our young entrepreneurs here in Richmond County, and we have to encourage them to start new businesses and work for themselves and employ other people in our county. We need to pass the torch. We also need to keep our young working in Richmond, so we have to build a stronger industry, a stronger working industry for our young people to stay here and not have to go away to work and be away from their families. We also need to take care of our seniors. In this, when it comes to affordable housing, we need to build affordable housing units for lower bracket, lower tax bracket seniors. They've worked all their life on this island. They've paid taxes, they've raised families, they've invested in our island. Now it's time for us to invest in them. When it comes to council, that's very simple for me. We have to work together for the betterment of Richmond County. We have to, we have to stop fighting for the whole pie. From year after year, again, I've attended these meetings, and we have to stop fighting to gain the whole pie every year. We have to work together to share the pie. Given that from year to year, the slices will look different from district to district, we still have to work together to divide those slices and make sure that everyone is taken care of here in Richmond County and all districts are taken care of. So on October 17th, I ask for your support, and I ask that for the next four years, we, as a district, represent our district together. Thank you all, stay safe and stay healthy. Merci beaucoup et au mieux. Je vous souhaite la bonne santé.
Hello, my name is Jerry Bork. I'm running for Richmond County Municipal Council to represent District Two. I'm sure many will remember I previously served from October 1985 to October 2004, serving two terms as deputy warden. Many will also remember my involvement with Al Madam Chase the Ace. It is time to bring back respectability, accountability, and transparency to Richmond County Council. Here are examples why. When the contract of CAO Ken McIntyre was terminated, it was done without just cause. The reason used, or I should say the excuse used, was the famous sundry account. The municipal auditors did a total review of that account and reported to council. It had been properly managed and they found no irregularities. As a result, a lawsuit ensued which cost you, the taxpayers, $38,500. What was not reported, a severance package was given to Mr. McIntyre. When you add the severance package to the $38,500 to settle the lawsuit, the total amount paid by you, the taxpayers, is $80,000. $80,000 of your tax money wasted. By the way, a second lawsuit is still pending and unresolved. Let's look at transparency. Each year, municipal council gives out grants. These are worthy and needy grants to Richmond County organizations. The normal practice was, at the end of the process, they would list and produce a list of all the recipients and the money they had received, and this would be posted so you, the taxpayers, could see where your tax dollars were being spent. This practice has not been done for the last six-plus years. In 1985, when I came on council, the residential tax rate was $1.09. When I left in 2004, it was $0.69, a reduction of $0.40 per $100 of assessment, which means if you had a $50,000 assessment, it was reduced by $200. On a $100,000 assessment, you had a reduction of $400. This was accomplished because we had a fiscally responsible council, and I must add, we had tremendous advice from CAO Louis DeGoo. This election year will not be a normal one. I've run four previous elections, gone door-to-door, returned two to three times if necessary. Due to COVID-19, I will not be campaigning door-to-door. Reason being, with the Atlantic Bubble now open, we have no guarantees that we do not have COVID carriers on Al Madam. Can you imagine how I'd feel if I went door-to-door, contacted COVID, continued to go door-to-door, and then returned home to be with my wife? And by the way, we both reside now with my 91-year-old mother. I'm sorry, I cannot take that risk. When it comes to the advance polling and the regular polling on October 17th, I will not, I repeat, I will not have any inside agents at any polling stations in order to maximize the space available to you, the voters. It is imperative that maximum social distancing be allowed in order to protect your health and safety. I am asking, when you consider who to vote for, to look at my previous experience, at the knowledge that I gained on how a municipal unit should be run. If you elect me as your councillor, you will have a full-time representative 24/7. If you elect me as your councillor, together, we can bring back respectability, accountability, and transparency to Richmond County Council. It is needed and required. Thank you.
Bonjour, hello. I'm Carolyn Clack Doyle. I'm running for municipal councillor in Richmond County, District Two. I'm from here, I grew up here, I graduated from IMDbH, and like many other young people, I left when I attended university at St. Effex and I moved on with my adult life. And over the years, I always came back with my children to visit my parents, Blanche and Paul Doyle in Ayrishat. My own children are now grown and they're moving on with their lives, and I'm glad to be back, back to the place that always remained in my heart. It's an island that I wrapped my mind around even when I was away. To get back to the to get back to the rhythm of the tides, and I feel like I've come full circle. Je suis la candidate pour le siège en conseil municipal pour le district numéro deux. Je me remercie les gens de Telil pour m'avoir donné l'opportunité de communiquer avec vous, les électeurs et les électrices. C'était une institution bénévole très importante pour les gens de Richmond et autres. Je suis d'ici, je suis native de Lille-Medam. Je suis diplômée de l'école secondaire de Lille-Medam. Mes racines sont de Lille-Medam. Chaque année, je visite avec mes parents, Paul and Blanche Doyle, I Ayrshire, avec mes enfants. C'est l'île de mon cœur. The reason I decided to run for council is simple. I want to contribute to developing a healthy and prosperous community, one where we live, work, and play, a community friendly to all ages. Municipal issues are my thing. I have a master's degree of urban and regional planning from Queen's University. Essentially what that means is that I understand the many dimensions of what makes communities thrive. I know that a lot can be accomplished when council, staff, volunteers, and community work together. I was a planner in community development while living in the USA. I chaired a committee that worked with local neighborhoods to get them organized. During those years, we made big changes targeting community resources. We had fire services, police, by-law enforcement, housing and planning, and a traffic control program in Public Works, all participating to train community leaders. It was a bottom-up focus, not a top-down one. Many issues affecting the residents of Richmond County are both federal and provincial government responsibility. But as municipal leaders, we can also have a role to play in grassroots development. I will be very vocal on council that no one can be left behind. I was here for Hurricane Dorian one year ago. So here in Richmond County, is our community ready for another hurricane season? And are we ready for the next wave of a global pandemic? The need for reliable and affordable rural internet and cellphone coverage is a municipal issue. I want to look closely at that, just like rural community public transportation. These are essential services that are far often taken for granted, but not everyone has access to or can afford these services. It's a path to being able to upskill, get to work, go to services, events, connect with friends, and for visitors to come here. Public transportation and cell service are lifelines. In weather or power emergencies, getting people to comfort stations where there is service. I want to say something about housing. If housing costs in our county take most of your money, then what's left over to participate in your community and to pay for your needs? Pensions and disability income must cover the essentials, with some to spare, and affordable housing is the key. So let's get more affordable housing built in the best locations. We would, we could explore a community land trust to host it, and something like an ecological housing project to save on energy costs. We could build something intergenerational or targeted to seniors. For people here not thinking of downsizing, in-home care is the key and getting help with home maintenance. Great mental health services here for bumps in the road that we face, respite care for caregivers, doctors to diagnose and prescribe treatment, nurses and home care workers. Planning our municipality to be a healthy community means a prevention focus too. You have nature trails, a variety of recreation activities, creativity experiences, training and upskilling to land good jobs and build a future. And maybe too, this is the time, and I should ask you, is this the time to look for solutions to climate change impacts? We can be part of the conversation, how do we do it? The COP26 is next year and was postponed this year due to the pandemic. That's when the worldwide community evaluate what each has been doing. Local does matter. How do we protect our coastal communities from erosion? Shopping local helps the situation. What are the barriers to supporting more local supply chains for the stuff we buy here? What can we grow local? And we are required to have a municipal plan. Let's take what was done and build on it. Let's do it with style, together, that celebrates the strength of diversity here. We are in traditional McMinn territory with strong Acadian, Scottish, English, and Irish roots. We have newcomers who are adding their voices and culture. So how can we support culture and are welcome? You know, there is an Osprey family in a nest at Lennox Passage Bridge. Let's get a municipal camera inside that nest. Every year, there is a new generation in that nest. They fly out and check out the favorite local businesses around here, and they notice the new businesses starting up. Whatever moves gets their attention. And for Osprey, who nest in Richmond County, fish is big business. I will follow the directives of the provincial public health department when I'm canvassing door-to-door. I will step back after I knock, and I'll leave you a flyer at the door with my platform and my contact information. It's also on the transcript below the video. Je vais me préparer pour les opportunités de parler français sur le conseil. Je vais approcher les Acadiens ici pour mieux connaître le besoin. Je suis Acadiane aussi. Je vais suivre les directives du département de la santé de la province. Je vais laisser un dépliant à vos portes avec mon plateforme et aussi mon numéro de téléphone et corriere. Donc vous pouvez me contacter davantage. Votre support est fortement apprécié. I would very much appreciate your support, thank you.
Hello, my name is Michael Digdon. I've lived in West Ayrshire most of my life, and I'm very excited and proud to be running for councillor for District Two. I am the president of both the Almedam Volunteer Fire Department and the Acadiaville Community Center. I am a baseball coach and umpire in the summer. And in the fall and winter, I am the referee-in-chief for the entire Straight Area Minor Hockey Association, where I am responsible for the growth and development of almost 30 on-ice officials. I am employed by the Department of Transportation and the owner of a small business, Highland Beverages. As a small business owner and operator, I understand the importance of how every dollar must be used efficiently and effectively, while maintaining the interest of the people and the county of Richmond. I would like to address a few topics that I feel require immediate attention. Number one, our seniors, our elderly, our loved ones. They are the pillars of our community, the heart and soul of the county, the people we respect and look up to. The same people that laid a foundation so we could build on. Yet our county is failing to look out for them, failing to protect them. Failing to provide them with the basic necessities to live a basic lifestyle. Currently, we have no affordable housing. We have no support for seniors with income below poverty. We don't even have emergency measures or any measures in place to check in on seniors in the event of power outages, in the event of storms, or even just the daily basic needs. This needs to change. At some point in our life, we will all reach the age where we will depend on someone else. I would like to know if someone will be looking out for me. Number two, for me is tourism. Tourism is the fastest-growing industry in the world. There is approximately $300 million per year comes into K-Bretton from tourism. Only 4% comes to Richmond County. So we're losing 96% to the rest of K-Bretton. It's time to promote tourism. It's time to promote Richmond County, and to do this, we need to invest. Invest in campgrounds, invest in walking trails throughout the county, invest in proper visitation information centers where local businesses can display artifacts. Join into an agreement with the provincial government and turn the Martinick Park into a campground, a walking trail, and a biking trail. Create the opportunity for tourism and campers to spend the night if required. Number three, for me, I guess would be that I will touch on a little bit of economic development. It's time we reinvest. Time we work with our neighboring towns and counties to further develop Richmond County. We need someone who specializes in economic development. To recruit and retain new businesses, it's time we invest in our young local entrepreneurs so the county can capitalize, grow, and prosper from inside and out. But before any of this happens, before any of these key issues can be addressed, we need to clean up the current dysfunctional council. We need to make change, and we need to do it now. It has to start with good governance, a governing body that starts at the top, a body that encourages and promotes staff, encourages and puts suggestions from you, the taxpayers, encourages and promotes growth and success. A governing body that puts the residents and the best interests of the county as their number-one priority. To make this happen, we need to incorporate three things. Number one, accountability. Be the model of behavior that you expect from your employees. You have to accept responsibility for your actions at all levels. Being accountable is the difference between success and failure. Number two, transparency. It's time to be open, honest, and straightforward. It's time to show taxpayers where their money is being spent, what it's used for, and no more hidden agendas. Keep the taxpayers informed. Number three is unity. Unity amongst all councillors, unity between staff and council. Bring the county together, create an open-door policy. Celebrate achievements and address their concerns. Having experience in leadership and a voice to advocate for accountability, transparency, and united municipal government to properly support the services and programs for the people in the community. All of this is possible when good governance is created and implemented. I understand the struggles many in our community face. Many people are trying to figure out who is looking out for them. I am. This is why I am running for councillor in District Two. I want to give back to my community for Richmond County. I cannot do this alone, but we can do this together. I am asking each and every one of you to join this movement of building good governance. Join this movement that believes a support, accountability, transparency, and unity. Join this movement that believes brighter days are ahead of us. I am asking you to believe. I'm asking you for your support and I'm asking for your vote to be the next councillor for the municipality of Richmond. Together, we will build a stronger community and a trustworthy council. One where we will be proud to call Richmond County our home. Thank you for your time, and I look forward to working for you and with you. If you have any questions or concerns, please feel free to call me, 902-631-0975, or email me at digdonforcouncillor@eastlink.ca. Thank you.
Hello, everyone, bonjour tout le monde. Over the next 10 minutes or so, I'm excited to chat with you about three topics. The first topic is me. It's a chance for you to get to know me, a little history lesson about Melanie Sampson, if you will. The second topic reflects voters' hopes for our county as shared with me and my thoughts on them. And the third topic is relating to my campaign plans. Richmond County has always meant home to me. I was raised in West Ayrshire by Judy and Henry Bro. And yes, if you are wondering, that is the Judy Bro who was the coordinator at the Diabetes Center for over 30 years, and that is the Henry Bro who worked at Purt Hocksbury Paper back in the day when it used to be Stora. After graduating from high school, I moved to Halifax, where I attended Mount St. Vincent University. In university, I obtained a Bachelor of Business Administration degree with a major in accounting. And then I went to work for a small, small to medium-sized accounting firm and studied in the School of Chartered Accountancy. In 1998, I was the VP of Finance for a company in northern New Brunswick. But the desire to return to Richmond County and start my family was much greater than my love of the job. So in August of 1980, 98, pardon me, so in August of 1998, my husband Brad and I returned to Lewesdale and have been here ever since. And if you're wondering, yes, that is Bradley Atomi Baco. Shortly after returning, I was hired as the controller for a local company. But in the year 2000, I realized how much I missed working with multiple clients and returned to public practice, working for a local accounting firm until 2005. During those five years, I was able to familiarize myself with various industries, the municipal units, the financial institutions, the long-term care facilities, and the not-for-profit sector in the straight area. Although my work was financial in nature, it gave me valuable exposure to the operations throughout Richmond and Inverness Counties. In 2005, I began my work in the field of adult education as a faculty member at the Nova Scotia Community College. And in addition to working at NSCC over these past 15 years, I have also been fortunate to work in my own business, performing accounting and bookkeeping services for many individuals and organizations throughout the region. In the 22 years since I returned to Richmond County, I have demonstrated my love of community through my involvement with many volunteer and corporate boards. I have been a longstanding board member of the East Coast Credit Union. I serve on the St. Louis Parish Finance Committee, St. Louis Catholic Women's League, and the Stella Maris Parish Finance Committee. I have served on the Lewesdale Co-op Board, the former Richmond Arena Association Board, the Richmond, the pardon me, the Regional Occupational Centre Board, and the Regional Occupational Centre Foundation Board. Over the years, I have also held many leadership roles through my work with the Straight Richmond Minor Hockey Association, the Nova Scotia Teachers Union, and the Nova Scotia Community College Academic Union. As I mentioned, my second topic reflects the hopes for our county that I have heard from so many fantastic residents in District Three and beyond. These hopes have helped to shape my campaign slogan. It is, "Restore Confidence, Rebuild Relationships, Rejuvenate People." First up, people want their confidence restored in their elected officials. They want their representatives to have a plan for our county, a plan that moves us forward by growing the economy, which includes attracting new businesses, developing our tourism opportunities, and making Richmond County an attractive place to move for work or retirement. They want their confidence restored, that a strategic plan will be supported by the annual budget to ensure it is fulfilled. This is something that I also want. Secondly, people are wanting Richmond County to rebuild relationships that have been strained over the years. Relationships within the county, like the seniors groups, the fire departments, and the tourism associations, to name a few. They also want relationships built outside of the county, particularly those with other municipalities and towns. It is time to put personalities aside. It is time to put personalities aside and collaborate with others. Working together as a team always yields better results than going it alone. Last, but certainly not least, people want to be rejuvenated. They want to be appreciated and supported and not only in a financial way. Without the hard work of our tireless volunteers, many of whom are in the 55-plus category, we would never be able to offer so many amazing services and activities in our county. Where would we be without our volunteer fire departments? Our people are truly our greatest asset. And we need to ensure that they have what they need to get the job done. My last topic relates to my plans for campaigning. In this time of COVID-19, I want the residents of District Three to understand that their safety is my number one concern. And although our province and indeed our district is doing amazing right now, we all know that that can change very quickly. For that reason, I've decided that a door-to-door campaign is not in the best interest of the residents of our district. This does not mean that I do not plan to reach out to you in many other ways. I have started a series of videos on my Melanie Sampson for District Three Facebook page. The first two of these videos contain the same information I am sharing with you here on TILLIL. On Facebook, transcripts accompany all the videos for those who prefer to read or for those who have limited internet or cell service. In recognition of community members without social media, I will be preparing at least two newsletters over the course of the election. These newsletters will be distributed by Canada Post and will contain similar information to my videos. By the time this is aired, I expect that you will have already received the first mail-out. Most importantly, I want to speak to as many of you as possible. I will be reaching out by phone, private message or email. And as with a typical doorstep visit, my interest is hearing from you. Hearing your questions, hearing your concerns and hearing your great ideas. Unfortunately, I don't have access to everybody's contact information and so this is where I'm going to need your help. If you're comfortable and you want to chat, please reach out to me via Messenger on Facebook, by text or calling 902-623-0966 or by emailing me at melonysampsondistrictthree@outlook.com. And that is a Sampson with a P. Lastly, home visits are not out of the question. If you are comfortable and you would like me to drop by for a chat, I am happy to do that. Just reach out with the contact information I provided above and we can set up a time that works for you. I'll mask up and we'll have a great physically distant visit. So that's my campaign plan for now. I do reserve the right to add things as they come to my mind. As my time comes to an end, I want to express my thanks to the amazing people at TILLIL for providing me and all of the candidates with the opportunity to promote our message and allow you to get to know us. TILLIL delivers such a valuable service, providing the ability for the residents of Richmond County and beyond to access so much important information. In closing, I want to say that for 25-plus years, I have been honing the skills required to be a worthy representative of the people of District Three and Richmond County. I have established myself as an active listener, an information gatherer, a courageous verbal communicator and a collaborative decision-maker. As you know, I can't promise anything in regard to spending and planning. I would be one of five people at the table making decisions. What I can promise you is that I will listen. I will research and I will communicate my thoughts. And I will do all of these with respect for the topic, but most importantly, for the respect for the residents of Richmond County. Thanks for listening. Merci.
Hi there. My name is Amanda Mumberkett. Many of my friends call me Mandy. I live just outside of St Peters and Grand Grav and I am running for District Four at Richmond County Council in this upcoming October 17th election. To tell you a little bit about myself, my mom is Lucy Burke from French Cove. She's the daughter of Aura and Sam Burke. Sam was a carpenter, worked all across the island and my grandmother operated her own grocery store in Sampsonville and French Cove for about 25 years. I remember that fondly growing up because there was just about an endless supply of bubble gum and candies. Good times. My father was Greg Buckley from River Bourgeois. And dad was the son of the Barrages who lived on the Lower Road. I have a sort of hazy memory of my grandmother Carrie before she passed away, her kindness and playing piano at her house, a piano I still have in my living room today. So growing up, I guess, between French Cove, Sampsonville, St Peters, River Bourgeois, you could kind of say I was a child of the district and had all kinds of friends everywhere, which I am so, so lucky and fortunate to have, to have had that experience. But when I graduated high school, I went to Antigoneish to take my Business Administration degree. My son Ryan and I headed off and I was happy to achieve that degree and then come home with him to, to work in the community here where I eventually met my husband Floyd and had another child, my daughter Julia, who we raised in Grand Grav. So for about 20 years, I've worked in the field of economic development. Started my career actually at the Lordways Enterprise Centre, which was one of the first CAP sites in the province of Nova Scotia. The CAP sites at the time were located primarily in schools and they were places where community members could come together to access technology and, and the internet in ways that it wasn't available to them in their homes. That was back in the days of dial-up, which I'm sure none of us wants to remember. And from the CAP sites, I began to run, I started to run after that, a tech company and eventually came to work at the Strait Highlands RDA. That was where I really kind of cut my teeth in the economic development world, working on projects from innovation to skills development to farmers markets and you name it, everything in between. When the RDAs closed though, I ended up having to take a job in Halifax, which meant a lot of travel for me. But it was a really valuable exposure into the world of entrepreneurship education, what that can mean for young people and what that can mean for the future of our province. And it also exposed me to some international development opportunities where I had the opportunity to work on agricultural projects in places as far away as the Congo. So some really fantastic experience with that job, but it was a lot of travel. And again, I really wanted to be working in my community. So when an opportunity opened at the Straight Area Chamber of Commerce, I definitely jumped on it and became their executive director. So I was at the chamber for about five years and what an experience it was. It allowed me to work with small businesses all across the straight region, to help them with their challenges, to advocate on their behalf. And what it taught me was that there's a resilience to the business community here that, that we can be really proud of. There are success stories all across the region. And, and sometimes the best job that we can do is to support our local businesses. And it's something that I've taken completely to heart. As my family will tell you, when I'm always on the hunt for local products and local, to support local businesses. But all of that experience together really allowed me to lead some really large-scale projects, conferences, to lead teams on all kinds of different projects from oceans-related development to tourism development to agriculture, you name it. Now I work for the Nova Scotia Community College as a community innovation lead. And that is another position where I have the opportunity to work with businesses of all kinds, to help them with their workforce development needs, to provide them with customized training opportunities and to help them solve their business challenges. So really, I think over the course of my experience, I've become someone somewhat of a problem solver and a known community champion. And I'm really proud of that record. And it's one of the reasons that I've taken the leap into municipal politics and have put my name forward as a candidate. So what would I like to see happening in Richmond County over the next number of years? There's really three things that I can boil it down to. The first is I would really like to improve services here. I think we need to look at how we're delivering services to our residents. And, and what's working is, is great, but where are there room, where is there room for opportunities to improve? And how do we live with our, within our means, our financial means in order to improve those services? So whether we're talking about economic development or fire protection or land use planning, we really need to examine the way we're doing things now and look for opportunities where we can create efficiency, but also provide the better services. I think we can also take this opportunity to look at other regions across the province of Nova Scotia and learn from their best practices. And of course, I would like to see Richmond County become a leader in accountability and transparency with its citizens. For many years and across, throughout my career, I've worked with boards of directors. And certainly my most recent experience at the chamber, working for a board of directors was no different. And what I found is that over the years is the way that you need to build trust with your members, your population, your boards, you need to have openness, transparency and accountability in order to build that trust and maintain it. Secondly, I'd really like to see our county start planning for growth, planning for the future. I'd like to take another look at our strategic plan that was completed recently and pick out the pieces that, that still make a whole lot of sense and tweak what doesn't. That strategic plan was developed with a great amount of consultation from residents. So it would be really wonderful for us to start capitalizing on all of that goodwill and all of that strategic input from the people of Richmond County. I'd like to also work with our industrial partners to ensure that we're doing our part to create a business-friendly climate for them. I'd also like to think about looking for ways to innovatively support our tourism industry. With the pandemic notwithstanding, prior to that, last year was a really great year, I think, for many tourism-based businesses in Richmond County. So what can we do to build on that momentum? I'd really like to see us also working with other local governments and such as the Village Commission in St Peters and the Baudelaire Bank Council to make sure that we are all sort of pushing Richmond County in the same direction towards investment readiness and working with our partners such as the Cape Breton Partnership and the Chamber on growth opportunities for the region that will have a real impact, positive impact here in the county. Lastly, I would like to take on the initiative of creating positive change in general. So that means to me engaging citizens more productively in the goings-on at council and at committee levels, working with them and supporting community groups on the projects and initiatives that are, that are important to them. If not financially, because again, we do need to live within our means, then how else can we be supportive that they could potentially leverage funding from other sources to make wonderful things happen right here at home? So, you know, I think overall, in general, what we need to be doing is opening our eyes to new ideas, to new initiatives. And I don't have to look very far to see that. About a year or so ago, a group of us had assembled and we wanted to, we wanted to put on a multicultural festival that would highlight all the different cultures east of the Causeway. And with the leadership, with the leadership of Baudelaire Bank Council and La Picasse and other groups, we were planning on a fantastic in-person festival this June. Of course, the pandemic hit and we had to pivot. What are we going to do? How else can we bring this, the highlight, this kind of fantastic social fabric in our community? And we ended up hosting an online festival called Malvidanich where by the end of the, by the end of the schedule, we had almost 50 different cultural experiences all on our Facebook page highlighting the fantastic, fantastic cultural fabric of our community. Everything from cooking experiences to eel hunting to game playing, you name it. Lots of storytelling, which builds on our, the oral traditions of our communities. And it, it turned into a real treasure trove of cultural offerings that our communities has to share with the rest of the world. It's a way to build understanding. That's a great example of, of how you can take a new, an old idea and turn it into something new in, you know, despite the circumstances of a, of a global pandemic. So these kinds of new ideas, I think, can come from our citizens in a more, in a more productive way and more frequently when they feel engaged. So at, when you sum that all up, and many people have asked me this, what's, what's the inspiration? Why would you, why would you run for municipal council? And I point back to a talk that I gave at a recent women's leadership school in Member Two. And really the talk was all about what if? What if we can make a difference by doing things differently? What if we can make our communities even better places to live than they already are? Well, how could you not run for council? And so that's why on October 17th, I'm asking for your support.
Hello Richmond County. It is my pleasure to be seeking reelection for District Five in the upcoming municipal election on October 17th, 2020. I would like to begin by thanking the residents of District Five for electing me in 2016. And I hope you feel as though you have been well-served over the past four years. It would be an honor to continue to represent each and every one of you for another term. To state the obvious, this year's election will be an election like no other. We are in the middle of a global pandemic. The traditional style of campaigning must be replaced with a heavier focus on, on social media. Yes, I am even on Facebook. Mail-outs, video and audio recordings so that candidates can communicate with their campaign message in a safe manner with their constituents. Four years ago, I ran a campaign, campaign based on the idea that it was time for change. Over the past four years, I have fought for fairness, stood up for what was right and made common sense decisions in the pursuit of positive change. I want folks to understand that the obstacles, the challenges, the struggles and the frustration have been very real. Despite my efforts around the council table, there is much work to be done to restore a responsible government that Richmond County deserves. A dramatic change in council is long past due. And I, like so many of you, am tired of the rule of the old boys' club. Councillors not abiding by roles and responsibilities. Seeing the public voice eliminated in such things like Question Period and the issue of Mayor versus Warden. Public information being hidden and or withheld. System manipulation for personal gains and agendas. And excessive tax dollars being spent on legal fees and contract settlements. In this upcoming election, there is an opportunity to form a forward-thinking council. A council that is responsive to taxpayers, promotes and builds upon the unique, unique strengths and assets of Richmond County and can nurture positive collaborative working relationships within council and beyond. I strongly believe that my experience will be a valuable asset on a council that will be guided by a strategic plan, respect and support all food banks, understand the value in sponsoring events like the Women's Leadership Conference, allow every voice to be heard around the council table, promote equity throughout all of Richmond County and stay true to the meaning of honesty, openness, transparency and accountability. On October 17th, 2020, I strongly encourage all eligible voters to exercise their right to vote and to give Richmond County the counsel that it deserves. On October 17th, I respectfully ask for your vote as councillor for District Five. Thank you. Merci. Well, Alan.